Jerem Melton Pauls Palermo Festerson Harding.
Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing if you would please for our invocation by Councilmember Benny Palermo.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. I guess I will start off today with a question similar to last week. What does Atlanta, Boston, LA, and Omaha have in common this week? Somebody said population, no, but we have March Madness NCAA men's Division One basketball, which we're super excited about. So I'd like to personally thank those people, groups, committees that brought this tournament to Omaha. It's an amazing thing. So if you're out in public and you see somebody wearing some team colors that maybe necessarily aren't your state's favorite, be sure to tell them hi, ask them if they need any help, remind them why we're happy they're here, and that we want them to come back. So, thank you.
Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for joining us today, and as a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. And before we begin with the main portion of our agenda today, Councilmember Palermo has some guests that he would like to introduce and have recognized, please. Mr. Palermo, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Gray. It's not every day you get your best friend, who also happens to be the CEO of Infinite Sports World and CEO of ICANN, which is the group that's with us here today. My Japanese is a little rusty, so I'll try to get through this, but they're the Student-Athlete Exchange Program, again, who's hosted by ICANN. Ichii Funa, men's basketball team from Funubashi Municipal High School. They're in Japan, obviously. Twenty-nine players, two coaches, and three ICANN reps that are here. They're taking their tour of downtown. We appreciate them stopping by. I know that when they leave here, they're headed to Creighton University. And then a slight plug, too, they have an event at Canaco tonight at 6:30, so thank you for being here.
Item six through eleven relate to the same project for Westside Replat Seven located northeast of Saddle Creek Road and Pacific Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six in ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district and an R8 district for this location and to approve the development plan. Item seven in ordinance to rezone this property from R435 GC District and GI District to R8 District. Item eight in ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item nine, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Westside Replat Seven. Item ten, a resolution to approve the final plat for Westside Replat Seven. Item eleven, a resolution to approve the Saddle Creek 1011 Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for a redevelopment site located northeast of Saddle Creek Road and Pacific Street in an amount up to $2,628,000.
Public hearing agenda items number six through eleven are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 Western Road, appearing on behalf of the developer. In this case, it's Saddle Creek 1011 LLC, which is actually a Bluestone Development. With me today from Bluestone is Deborah Christensen and Christian Christensen. Also with me today from Lamparneerson is Randy Kuzak and Matt Cruz, the consulting engineers on this particular project. And I've got Todd Muller of Alley Pointer and Makedo Architecture. We went through the number of approvals that we're seeking today, so I'll jump right into the actual details of the project. For those of you who are not familiar with the location... Is that clear enough? This is the project site outlined in orange. This is Pacific Street. On the south side, Saddle Creek. On the west side, you have Forty-Eight Street. On the other side of a rollhouse is that about the proposed development. The proposed development is about 2.643 acres, and it currently consists of five different lots. And this is an aerial photograph. And on those five lots, there are currently four residential structures. Does this get lighter, or do you think it's...
That's good.
Is that good? Okay, it looks a little darker on here. So there's currently four residential structures in this location, and of course, you have the warehouse in this particular location. This also shows a view from Saddle Creek looking east. This is the existing building. You can see some of the residential structures back here to the south along Pacific Street, but this is what it looks like currently today. As far as the current zoning, it's kind of a mishmash of zoning right now. You have GC is the main part of the proposed site. You have R435 residential, and then you have general industrial here. And then to the east, you have the same R435, and then to the south, you have the same And then to the north, you have general industrial. To the west, you have general industrial. You have community commercial here in this particular location. So like these older developments and older neighborhoods within the city, you have a lot of this kind of cross zoning, if you will. So what this proposed development will do is rezone this from those various zoning classifications to R8 with an MCC overlay and a PUR overlay district on top. This is the proposed site plan. There's currently three buildings that are being proposed. This is what we refer to as Building Number One. Then you have Building Number Two, and then you have Building Number Three. Building Number One is a five-story building, and it contains 134 units. Then there are two three-story townhome-style buildings that contain 24 units total, so 12 in each. So the total number of units for this particular development is 158. It's important to note that under the R8-based district zoning classification, you could actually have 229 units, which would be 71 units more than what's being called for with this particular development, or 31 percent less than what could be built with the R8 zoning classification. I'd also call out that there's a 30-foot buffer along the eastern boundary of this development to the adjacent residential houses here along Forty-Eighth Street. As far as the unit mix with respect to the five-story building, there are 46 convertible units, there are 76 one-bedroom units, and there are eight two-bedroom units, and there are four three-bedroom units within Building Number One. As far as the two townhome-style buildings, again, a total of 24 units, 12 in each. There are six efficiency units on the first floor of each one of these buildings, and then there are six two-bedroom units on the second and third floors of these two developments or two buildings here. Access along the townhome-style units or buildings are all off of Pacific Street, but all the parking is in the rear, and there's a sidewalk that comes through the parking area that serves both of these buildings as far as the front door access. And you'll see that in a little while when we get into the building elevations of those townhome-style units. The average monthly rental for the various units is $1,100 a month, so that's not insignificant, like all Bluestone projects that has a number of amenities, both indoor and outdoor. As far as the interior, there's where most of the amenities are located here within Building Number One. There's, of course, a common lobby, there's a fitness room, there's what they call a chill zone, and a fireplace, a coffee area, a conference room. And then, of course, the outdoor amenities that they have are a raised patio, there's a fire pit, and a grilling area. As far as parking, total number of on-premises or off-street parking are 170 parking spaces. There are 62 internal parking spaces within Building Number One, and there are 108 parking spaces on the premises. And so that is a little over a one-to-one ratio with one parking stall per unit, which is consistent with the infill and redevelopment guidelines. It also calls for a one-to-one ratio when you have innovative design and such. We will or intend to provide some dedicated parking stalls for the townhome-style units. Right back here, just to the north of the townhome-style units, there's 23 parking stalls located right here. There's 24 units that may fluctuate from time to time. Some of these unit renters here can actually rent a parking stall inside Building Number One, so it'll kind of be on an ongoing basis what the demand is for dedicated parking, but the idea is to try to keep parking off of Pacific Street to the extent possible by allowing convenient parking for these townhome-style units here along Pacific Street. As far as access into the site, there is a dedicated right turn off Saddle Creek into the site. There's a dedicated left turn lane out of the site to make a southbound left turn onto Saddle Creek. And then there's a dedicated right turn lane, if you want to head north, on Saddle Creek. That is the only access to the site. There are no other access points from a vehicular perspective that serve the site. And so again, you have three lanes coming in and out of the site at that location. This is the proposed landscaping plan. Hopefully you can see that, but you can see there's a sufficient amount of parking actually that leads or exceeds the landscaping requirements under the R8 zoning classification, which brings me to the building elevations. This is a view of the five-story building or Building Number One, looking from Saddle Creek to the east. This is that same view, but more of a nighttime or a dusk-type look to it. I would call out also that it's mostly brick masonry. There's metal panel, there's some wood accents, and of course, you have the flat roof. And then you get to the townhome-style units along Pacific Street. And here, you have brick masonry on the first floor, you have fiber cement lap siding on the second, third floor. You have the gable roofs, asphalt shingles, and there's planter beds on the Pacific Street side. And the reason why these are different than, of course, the Building Number One or the five-story building, it's more fits into the fabric and the character of the adjacent residential neighborhood to the south and also to the east with the gable roofs. Here's that same elevation look in the dusk setting along Pacific Street. This is a straight-on view of the units. Again, the front doors for these townhome-style units are off of Pacific Street, but parking is in the back with a sidewalk coming through these two buildings here to serve both of This is just a depiction, looking really from the southeast portion of the proposed development, looking northwest and what it looks like on the interior of the development. And this is that same dusk setting as well. As far as traffic, again, Matt Cruz is here to answer any questions that you might have, but we did prepare a traffic study that was submitted and reviewed by the Public Works Department. It shows that there is adequate capacity on Saddle Creek. There's no material adverse impacts on Saddle Creek, and there are no public improvements that are required based upon the traffic study. So again, if you have any questions about that, Matt is here to answer those. We did attend a neighborhood meeting with the Morton Meadows Homeowners Association on October 24th. There was over 100 people. My understanding, it was one of their largest meetings that they ever had in attendance. We thought that the project was, I thought, well-received from a number of them, especially after that meeting, and a number of people came up and thought that it was a nice project. It is a downzoning from what's currently there with GI and GC, so that's a good thing, and we think it fits in well with the neighborhood. There's been numerous other correspondence, as you know. I think Bluestone goes overboard with the amount of communications, which is a good thing, and we appreciate that. I think the neighbors appreciate that, as far as the amount of communications and keeping everybody apprised in the homeowners association, as well as the adjacent neighbors, as to what's going on, what's being proposed, and addressing any concerns that they may have or express regarding the project. I think Christian and Deborah do a wonderful job at communicating with the neighbors. So that brings me to the TIF, or the redevelopment plan. There'll obviously be a redevelopment agreement that will come that will memorialize the redevelopment plan itself. As far as the TIF, and Bridget may add to this, but the total construction costs are about $22.2 million. The TIF-eligible expenses are a little over $3.8 million, and the projected valuation on full buildout is a little under $14 million. So it supports TIF in the amount of $2,628,000. This comes to you with favorable recommendations from all the departments, favorable recommendation from the planning board, and I believe that they're looking at beginning construction as soon as possible after these approvals are obtained, if they're so obtained. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions or address any concerns of the opposition, if there is any today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Afternoon. Bridget Hadley, City Planning. As Larry has mentioned, the TIF is about $2.6 million, and the TIF Committee has given review of this and approved it, and the TIF request does comply with community development laws, well as our guidelines, and the project does meet with the master plan, so we do ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Please come to the microphone and name an address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Tom Richter. I live at 4388 Mason Street. And you might be surprised, because Mason isn't right next to this development, but I am a member of the Morton Meadows neighborhood for the last 26 years, and I just have some concerns. But before I voice those, first of all, I want to thank the council. You have an almost thankless job. You've got to weigh all these different points of view. You've got to ultimately act on behalf of what's best for the community as a whole, but I do appreciate you at least listening to our points of view on some things that weren't mentioned just previously. Also, I just want to say that overall, the main part of this project is fine with me as far as the Building Number One. My concern is much more on the Pacific Street development, which I'll get to in just a minute. But as far as Bluestone goes, it's sort of remarkable to me that they say they're going to be a good neighbor, they say they've communicated. Yes, they have, but it's all been pushback. Even our Neighborhood Association, the planning board asked them to meet with our planning, asked to meet with our Neighborhood Association, and everything was pushback. It's just hard to believe that we don't have any good ideas, that all of our points of view are just not relevant. And so I've been involved in planning for a government agency for a lot of years, and our community engagement, we at least try to listen a little more and even act if possible. So that's one thing that concerns me. They say they're going to be a good neighbor in the future, but if their corporate philosophy is just simply pushback, that they're holding all the cards, I kind of wonder in the future, because there obviously are going to be some problems in the future, especially of parking. So that does concern me. As I said, I'm okay with the main part of this development, and I think it fits in perfectly with Saddle Creek. You saw the design, it's a little industrial-looking, which will fit in just fine with Saddle Creek, but it's the Pacific Street. There will be four very modest homes that are going to be destroyed to make way for these, what are called townhomes. It's really more apartment blocks, it's units for rent, it's not homes that are going to be for sale. And my concern is the precedent of this. I know that some of you are fiercely passionate about affordable housing, and these are modest homes. These are the kind of homes that somebody with limited means can actually become a homeowner and move up as a homeowner. And by destroying these, this is a small way of destroying that opportunity. And so I guess my question for the council is that over 40 percent of Morton Meadows has been placed by the city in community development areas. And so is this a precedent? What will come next? Sure, this is just four houses on Pacific Street, but what is the future for our neighborhood of Morton Meadows? You know, I'm not stupid. I know that we're near the Med Center, and you've got to take care of the Med Center. There's a big demand for housing because of the increased payroll at the Med Center. But I just ask you to consider really the future here. You know, when I discovered in this controversy that my house is in one of these community development areas, you know, I started feeling like I've got the Sword of Damocles over me. You know, am I going to have a knock at the door some night with a developer, you know, holding up their TIF, and they're planning their building permit, you know, and saying, "Well, you're in the way here. We've got a development coming up here, and you're just in the way." So I'm just primarily concerned about the precedent on Pacific Street. The main building one is fine, it'll add to our community, no problems there, but I would ask that you think about Pacific Street, and at the very least, they explained how the parking is an interior, but the entrances to the two townhouse blocks are both exterior. They're off of Pacific. And sure, there'll be parking inside, but isn't it human nature, especially if you've been out shopping for groceries and you've got a heavy sack of groceries, you're going to try to park right in front of your building on Pacific? And so at the very least, perhaps direct them to redesign their intent for these blockhouses and have the entrances facing interior rather than exterior to Pacific. And just finally, my city councilman, Mr. Jerem, campaigned on putting people first, and I just ask you to just think carefully about particularly the Pacific Street part of this project, just how we are putting people first, and maybe give Bluestone what they need rather than maybe what they want. And again, thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Thank you. My name is Nino Greco. I live at 4673 Pacific, about a block east of the proposed townhomes. And I sent you a letter earlier today stating some of my concerns, but just basically a simple fact to look at, not number of bedrooms, not number of units, number of tenants versus number of parking stalls. Do all you own a car? And if you have a wife, you have two cars? This is not going to work out. The numbers just don't add up. And my block's already crowded with parking, so I know what that's like, and this is going to be overwhelming for the next block down the street. I just hope you will really look into this hard before you just give them the okay on this project. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Yes, sir. Name an address for the record, please.
Hello, my name's Mark Von Drosick. I live at 211 South 37th Street. I actually grew up a block and a half from this proposed development. I've got a couple of things I'd like to say about it. First is that I do not own a car. I don't really want to own a car. I think they're a burden, especially on young people who have student loan payments and other such things to deal with. And I would just like to first ask that the city council, in this project and all the future projects that it undertakes with in regards to development along Saddle Creek Road, is that I know that there's in the works a major renovation of Saddle Creek Road between Center Street and Hamilton Street been proposed. It's like a 50-year, 100-year plan. It's meant to be a large renovation, and that's in the works coming down the park. But I would ask that considerations about bicycle transportation along this route be taken into consideration. I know there's a hotel being built at Saddle Creek and Dodge Street, and it seems that that hotel is being built right up to the corner of the intersection, which doesn't seem to leave much room for development in terms of, you know, what the city has options for when it rebuilds those intersections, rebuilds those roads in the future. And so I just want to ask that we take those things into consideration when we approve projects like this. The second has more to do with what the other folks have come up here and talked about, which is the price of these units and the people who will be living there. There's a large discussion about gentrification happening in the city, where buildings like the Colonial Hotel, 38th and Farnham, were once low-income, short-term rental agreement sort of buildings, and now they're very expensive long-term agreements. And I'm not specifically criticizing this one individual development for this kind of happening. What I want to ask is that I've had some discussions with developers, and they all seem to think that a certain number of units per development, 15 percent is a number uncommonly given, are set aside to be at market rate prices. And I've heard earlier, the average price for one of these units of this place is going to be $1,100. That seems like a lot to me. I'd ask what the one-room bedroom was going to cost for a working individual like me. It's probably unaffordable. I could probably rent out one of the rooms in the small houses that are there right now, but I don't think I could afford to live in this development once it's built in the neighborhood that I grew up in. So I'm very concerned that not so much the transformation physically of the neighborhood, I would love for Omaha to build up instead of out, but I would ask that considerations be given to the number of units that are going to be set aside for market rate or for low-income individuals, and that we at least be thinking about those things when we allow this development to happen in our neighborhoods. My parents still live in the house where I grew up at 46th and Pacific, and they and a lot of other residents in the neighborhoods are very concerned that their neighborhoods are going to change, not physically, but financially, economically. I just want to lend some opinions to that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, do the proponents wish any rebuttal time? Give you a few minutes, Mr.?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 Western Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant and developer. Just a couple of things, actually. You know, I think the master plan always talks about diversity of housing. This adds to the diversity of housing in this particular neighborhood. I think fronting the townhome-style units onto Pacific Street makes it part of the neighborhood and fits into the fabric and the integrity of the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood. So I think to turn them around and face the other direction would be a travesty, actually, with respect to the neighborhood, because I think it actually fits in and makes it look very nice, and it'll be nice for the neighbors to the south to look across the street and see, you know, these very nice units and very nice buildings directly across the street with the planter beds as well, and the amount of landscaping that they're proposing along Pacific Street. So the four houses that are currently there on Pacific Street, they rent now for $900 to $950 each, those houses. So the average rental rate within this project is $1,100, but the studios, my understanding, will be about $800. So the average rental rate is $1,100, but the studio units will be $800. These are market rate rents. They are not affordable housing or low-income housing projects. There's conventional financing on those. And as far as the amount or number of parking spaces, again, we've been doing this a lot where the infill guidelines and redevelopment guidelines apply, and is the one-unit to one parking space ratio is adequate for these areas. And I thought it was interesting that that gentleman doesn't have a car and doesn't want one. I think that's what you're finding with today's younger generation. And so there are other transit opportunities that I think are coming down the road. There is a bus stop, although it's, I think, a block north, and there's a grocery store just north, but I think that's becoming more of the trend, and I think that's why the planning department and the developers are realizing, and that's why those infill and redevelopment guidelines were established, is because they're where everyone's recognizing that that parking requirement isn't necessary in these parts of the city. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and again, the whole development team here is here as well, if you have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, thank you, and thank you to my neighbors who came down today. I've known at least two of them here today for many years and see them in church on Saturdays and Sundays, so I appreciate you coming. One of the things that happens on these projects when developers have a proposal in District Three is they always have to have a neighborhood meeting, and if they go to the planning department without having done that, the first thing I think they're told by Ms. Hadley or the pre-app committee is, "Go meet with the neighbors and talk with them." So with this particular development... So with this particular developer, who I think many of you know is one of the more respected ones in town, they did two things. They went and did a letter campaign or postcard inviting immediate neighbors to come meet with them and have one-on-ones, and then they had a broader meeting where they had the neighborhood out. And the interesting part of this particular proposal is I live at Forty-Eighth and Hickory, just south of here, and go by this spot regularly. And when the prospective apartments could come up, there were some people on Pacific that I spoke with that live on the south that were tired of rental houses on the north side of the street. They were tired of the worn-out, rundown, not-so-well-maintained properties, and the prospect of redevelopment that was reminiscent of the row homes at Little Italy that were developed by the same developer, they were actually intrigued by that and had an opportunity to see what they could look like and came to me and said, you know, that's not a bad deal, but can they dedicate parking on the north side of those row homes, which the developer has agreed to do as a way to do that? They've also said that if parking is an issue along Pacific and the neighbors on Pacific discover that it's an issue, they're going to work collaboratively with the city's process to limit the times or hours or where people can park. So they're very much been amenable to those sorts of concessions. In terms of the density of the project, in terms of the number of units, we had a discussion about, well, what does the project return look like? Can you still have your return for the investment versus your acquisition, your development costs, your financing? And if you reduce the number of units, they just don't have the economics and the terms of return to make the project viable. And so unfortunately, when you have infill development, it is a very expensive, very costly, time-consuming process that involves multiple disciplines of professionals, from the engineers, the architects, the lawyers, you name it, just to get to the point where they are today. It's not uncommon to have not just one hundred or two hundred, but projects this size could have easily three hundred thousand dollars in soft costs in them before they've even got anything to go with. So then they have to deal with the zoning issues. And in this case, you saw residential, general commercial, and general industrial. So in balancing what could go here and where it could go, the way I'm told by city law and city planning is it's considered a down zone because the predominant zoning on it's general commercial with general industrial, and a piece of it's industrial, excuse me, residential. So when they look at the infill development guidelines, this is actually considered something that meets the goals of the city, meets the infill development guidelines of the city, and that's why you see the planning department recommending support, the TIF committee recommending support, the planning board recommending support. And so my approach on this has been with the developers, well, let's see what sort of architectural amenities and building material amenities we can get to really make this a nice-looking place. And I think what the developers done at extra cost is develop this row house-looking concept for what are rental units along Pacific, and a substantial part of the building itself for the main building that'll have the brick and mortar and landscaping that is the highest that the city, you know, can require, they're doing as a part of this project. So when people ask me, where do you stand on this? I said, well, you know, as long as we can have them work with us to address the parking as it pertains to the Pacific and address those concerns, get the highest amenities we can in terms of building materials, architecture, landscaping, that they be a member of the neighborhood, that they participate in the neighborhood, and that they work with the neighbors, as long as it meets all of the other criteria of the city, that's something that I would be supportive of. And so I am supportive of this project because I know this developer, I know how hard they try, and it's lamentable that at least one person had a sense that, you know, there was a meeting that he was at where he didn't have that sense, because that's the first time I've heard that with this team. And so I think that maybe you ought to consider reflecting back or meeting with him and seeing what went wrong or awry in his sense, because that's not something that we want to have going forward. But with that, I would make the motion to support and approve items six through ten.
We've moved and seconded to approve items six through ten. Mr. Harding?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll try not to repeat much of what Chris said, because I think he said it very well, but I do want to just point out a couple of things. The development along Saddle Creek, really from Center Street all the way up to Coming, I think is really exciting news for Omaha. And I think to have, you know, a development team like Bluestone, who's putting twenty-two million dollars basically at risk to invest in the area, I think is a great thing for infill development in Omaha, so I'll gladly support this.
Thank you. There are no more lights. It's been moved and seconded to approve items six through ten. Roll call.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Pauls.
Palermo.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six through ten are approved, seven to zero.
Second, roll call.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eleven is approved, seven to zero. Item twelve, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Sexton Enterprises, Inc., doing business as The Stardust, located at two-six-zero-three South Hundred and Twentieth Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number twelve is today.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Ron Sexton. I'm the applicant for the liquor license for The Stardust Lounge.
Thank you. Can I have your address, too, please?
My address is seventy-two thirty Josephine Court in La Vista.
Thank you. And you'll be answering any questions we might have?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard on item number twelve? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ron, I have a couple of questions. Now, are you the new owner?
Not owner, leaser. I'll be leasing the property from the owner.
Okay.
Is Mr. Dennis Hackey. He lives in Las Vegas, but he has that whole little strip there.
Okay, so you're going to be managing this establishment?
Yes, I've signed a three-year lease for it on the establishment.
Do you know much of the past history?
Not quite as much as I should perhaps, but because I have kind of, well, I was in Omaha quite a while, but then I left and went to California. I've been back in Omaha like three years, and I was not really aware of this property or even its history. I just kind of know some of the former names. It was the Tailgater Lounge, I think American Dreamer or something like that, too.
Well, just to be honest with you, next month, we were going to have the manager of Blue Legends come in front of the law committee because of past issues we've had with that area. There are two lounges there, that and Rehab. When anybody says something Hundred and Twentieth Center, I know automatically what we're talking about. What I'm trying to do is to indicate that that area has been an area that we've had issues or the police have had issues with in the past. And since you're going to be a new manager of that area, eyes are on you because of past circumstances. That's not your burden, but just want to let you know that we'd have one of the lounges says, well, it's this person's problem, and the other would say, this person's problem, because so many things have happened out in the parking lot. So there are cameras there, and hopefully, they are working, and if we asked to see the results of that, you would be able to say, yes, they are working, the police have access to that, and they have access to come into the building, and it's not going to be an issue. I'm just, I know you're new to this particular place, but I'm just trying to let you know ahead of time, this has been an issue that's come in front of, I happen to chair the law committee, and this, I know the place, and I'm just trying to let you know, although I will support, since you are going to be a new manager, that you have to be on top of the game.
I understand all of what you said, sir. I do know of some of that reputation that the Rehab Lounge has had, and my understanding is that it's had the most of the problems instead of the current Blue Legends Lounge, you know, that because of their clientele, their age, and to help all your fears, I, my plans, operating plans for that would be to draw more of a sedate crowd, providing jazz and music, big band, swing music, and perhaps have a, I'd really like to have a ballroom dance club in there. I would like also have at least once or twice a month, if possible, I think it's possible if it'll work for me, if it could be supported, perhaps like afternoon, like one or two afternoons per month to have like a two o'clock, a string quartet, classical string quartet, a classical pianist, harpist, guitarist, whatever, to try to draw some of that type of personnel in that area. And looking at the demographics of the area, I think that part would work. I think it'd help the reputation of the club. And as far as security, I've talked to several security companies. I'm confident that what we can make happen with that would be okay with sensors and cameras, as you said. Also, I've talked to several security guards and so forth, which I employ, and if necessary, I would also support hiring off-duty policemen for what hours would be necessary, particularly probably weekends, because we understand that's kind of where most of the problems would be.
Well, to be honest with you, your business plan seems like one that would promote a different type of crowd going there, and it seems like you do understand some of the issues that I'm just trying to stop. And if it's another issue to another establishment, that's great, but what you are proposing, it sounds relatively unique to that area. So I do appreciate you making that effort.
Mr. Harding?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Pauls probably at least started the conversation to the number of questions I had, too, but if you indulge me just a little bit, the first point I had, too, was that, and we talked about this at a pre-council meeting, about there was supposed to be a meeting with the current ownership because of some recent issues and along with the neighboring property or the neighboring operator. I would, I'd still like to see that meeting take place. I think it would be important. It would actually get a chance for you to maybe have a little bit better understanding of maybe some of the history, also for you to maybe sit down with the ownership of the establishment next door to walk through some of these issues. Just for the record, is there any relationship between you and the current operators of the bar?
No, I've met the lady twice, I believe, you know, just from, first time just being a customer, because I just wanted to go and see what it was like after she, I think she's been here about a year or so, I'm not sure, you know. But I was not aware of a meeting or anything, you know, that was requested by anyone on her account, you know, to.
Okay.
I wasn't aware of any of that.
Have you had any establishments that you've operated before, either in Omaha? I know you said you've been away from Omaha for some time or in other places.
Before I left Omaha, I was a manager of one nightclub here for a while, and then also in California, I was a manager, assistant manager for two other locales out there.
What kind of establishments were those?
In California, one was a wine bar, a wine, in English called Wine Cellar, you know, which did support entertainment in forms of singles or duos, whatever. The other one was a bigger place, which supported entertainment like three or four nights a week, you know, and with never any clientele problems that I was aware of.
What was in him at the establishment in Omaha?
Bourbon Street Lounge.
Bourbon?
Ninetieth and Center.
Ninetieth and Center.
Yes, I remember that one.
Just a few more questions. I think there's, not that maybe it's relevant here, but I think there's some conversation that maybe the current operators not paying bills and not really keeping, when do you take over possession of the space?
My understanding that when she received her thirty-day notice, that, well, I believe she's supposed to be out by the ninth of April, the week of that.
And your lease takes over her?
Well, depending on, you know, if the license is approved and everything, which would be probably a week later, either the week of the sixteenth or the week of the twenty-third.
Okay.
So either one of those would be, you know, I don't think we have to do any, well, I know we don't want to do any remodeling. The only thing I would do is a sports club now. It has five pool tables and bunches of dart boards, so I would have all those removed.
Okay.
It's not going to be a sports complex at all.
And I appreciate you going through, when I was originally reading the application, seeing what you were planning on doing, I was, I was, wanted to make sure what I was reading is kind of what you were intending to do, and I think you verified that here today, so.
Yes, sir.
I don't have any other questions, but I was going to have the officer come down and if there's something you wanted to say. Thank you. You can have a seat. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Lieutenant Amy Otter with the Omaha Police Department, five-oh-five South Fifteenth. Currently, I'm assigned to the sea shift command, so two o'clock to ten o'clock P.M. in the location where the Southwest Precinct, where the current establishment is, and then obviously the future one as well. Primarily, and I thank you both for asking very good questions that we were concerned about as well. In recent, even so recent as Saturday on St. Patrick's Day, we were giving special attention to that area for various reasons, primarily for the crowd that that bar was attracting. And so we want to make sure that we were out ahead of it, and we didn't have any problems, so we tried to head off any problems that may have come that evening. I can report that we didn't have any big problems that night, so I think we worked pretty well with the current owner. I did have a conversation with her face-to-face on Saturday, and I'm a bit surprised that she didn't mention this to me, in the sense that she was, you know, maybe looking, it was a vague response of, I'm just getting tired of doing this, but no further conversation as to the actual transfer of ownership and completely getting out of the business. So, you know, from our side, I think there were just some questions as to the reason for the change of the liquor license, and that was pretty much answered, I think, today. And certainly, we'll do what we can to work, you know, with the new management of the facility to make sure that we're doing everything we can to head off any potential problems before they would arise. So we, too, are very acute to the problems in that area, and we're doing our best to try to take care of those. So anyone have any questions for me?
I don't think so.
Thanks, Lieutenant.
Thanks, Lieutenant.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Starting, or are you done?
I am done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You don't have, okay. Is there a motion? Moving and seconded to approve item twelve. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twelve is approved, seven to zero. Item thirteen, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Summit Hotels, LLC, doing business as Sheraton Omaha, located at six-five-five North Hundred and Eighth Avenue.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirteen is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name's Misty Peaz. I work for the Sheraton Omaha Hotel, and we applied for not really a new liquor license, but we do have new ownership and a new management company, so it's the same existing staff that was there, and we did not have any issues before with following the laws. So basically, that's what we're here for today.
Thank you. Can we have your address for the record, please?
Sure, it's six-five-five North Hundred and Eighth Avenue.
Thank you. Are there any other, you just had to answer any questions we might have, right?
Yes.
Okay, are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item thirteen. No lights. Roll call.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirteen is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Item fourteen, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Maximos Cantina, LLC, doing business as Maximos Cantina, located at two-six-one-three North Main Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number fourteen is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. President and members of the council.
Item 14, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Maximos Cantina LLC, doing business as Maximos Cantina, located at 2613 North Main Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. President, and members of the council. My name is Allison Beseeglia. I'm an attorney at Abraham's, Caslow &amp; Casman. We're located at 8712 West Dodge and here in Omaha. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, Maximos Cantina LLC, which has been operating on a current, on a prior license up until recently. Fred Hunzaker is actually acquiring the ownership interest in the LLC from the estate of his late wife. And so by law, applicant is required to obtain a new license. I am happy to answer any questions at this time that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding?
Just a quick comment, just another great restaurant in the Elkhorn area, some exciting things happening on Main Street in Elkhorn, too, with some of the street renovations and lighting, which will certainly be of benefit to Maximos. And if anyone's ever out there, I'd suggest the enchiladas, Maximo.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moving and seconded to approve item 14. No lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda, and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 15 through 17 were held on March 13, 2018. Moving and seconded to approve items 15 through 17. No lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 18 through 20 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve items 18 through 20. No lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda, and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 15 through 17 were held on March 13, 2018. Moving and seconded to approve items 15 through 17. No lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 18 through 20 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 21, a resolution to approve a settlement in the amount of $232,000 for pending litigation in the case of loan T. One versus City of Omaha.
Public, the vote is today, the public hearing was last week. Is there a motion? First, Mr. Jerem.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, ma'am. What are you doing?
I wanted to address what Jerem was talking about.
About what?
You said if anybody has anything to say, right?
On the particular agenda item?
Well, I think this is of utmost importance. It's about police corruption.
That's not on our, that's not on our agenda right now, ma'am.
I understand, with all due respect. I tried to have a conversation with you about this, and you have been dismissive, and you haven't addressed the issue. My property is being vandalized. I'm being illegally surveilled.
Ma'am, it's not, this is not...
This is the time.
No, this is not on the agenda right now, ma'am. I'm sorry. It's just not.
Well, when is it going to be on the agenda? Because I have evidence right here of police corruption. My phones have been jammed.
Ma'am, I'm going to have to ask you. You're out of order right now.
It's what?
When will be the best time? Because I tried to write, Mayor? Ma'am, ma'am.
I know, but I understand, with all due respect. When will be the best time to address police corruption and being harassed, being vandalized, and threatened?
Ma'am.
I know, but it was threatened with murder.
Ma'am, I think you're going to...
I know, but as you see, okay, I will. But you see, there says a threat.
And I'll help you carry it if you want, but you got to get going now, right?
Okay, so something as that serious, of that importance, is not important enough to address?
I'm sorry.
My name is Tyce Wright, 2857 Kansas Drive, Bellevue, Nebraska, 68005. And I have tried to speak with police. The police have had police reports, and they're protecting James and Andrew Hope, who are in the mall, and I have evidence, and that's why you're rushing me off.
No, ma'am, that's not why. But thank you, though.
When will be the best time then? With all due respect, when will be the best time?
She's in Bellevue. All right, Mr. President.
Mr. Jerem?
Thank you, Mr. President. We talked about this at the last hearing, and in looking at this case and some other properties, I think that are involved, it's not something that is, I think, the best, most desirable when you have taxpayers asking why you're paying out this kind of money to settle cases. But in the end of the day, as a lawyer, we lean on our lawyers. And our city attorney has recommended that this is the best course of action to resolve this case, to eliminate the risk to the taxpayers of a judgment substantially in excess of this. Whether that would happen or not, who knows, and there are legitimate defenses to these claims. But I come down on the side, and this particular matter is following the recommendation and advice of our city attorney. So I would make a motion to approve.
Second, Ms. Melton.
Thank you. I want to reiterate, I think Councilman Jerem actually, last week and this morning, really gave an accurate reflection of how you have to come to decision in some of these cases. And when you're settling a case, when you're talking about negotiations and settling cases, there's all kinds of things that come into play. Things that the parties are sharing with each other, things that have come up in discovery. Both sides always believe they have, they have a case and would like to go to court. But as an attorney, I always, I always look at my clients, and this is sometimes what I have to say, is what is your principle worth to you? Is, I've repeated that question on multiple occasions. I think, and everybody wants to go, well, what are my chances? What are my chances, Amy? What are our chances in court? And I say, well, I'm not a bookie. So, and I can't go with, I can't give my clients percentages on, you know, whether we're going to win or not. But what I can do is kind of lay out the case, lay out each side. And then I can say, if we take our chance at court, here's where I think, here's your low, here's your high, here's the possibilities. So when I have another attorney that I know thinks and does that, and has spent a lot of time considering what to do here, and this isn't my money, you know, when I'm talking to my clients, it's their money. And I say, what's your principle worth to you? Sometimes it's worth it. Sometimes they say, Amy, I'll spend $5,000 to win my two, just in principle. That's fine, and we can, we can go do that. I don't feel that I should be doing that when I'm dealing with the taxpayer dollars. So although we may not feel like this, that the individual taxpayer may feel like they're paying too much, you always got to look at a case. There's a chance that we could pay less, there's a chance that we could pay more. That's what both attorneys are looking at, and that's what's called a negotiation and a mediation. And I think in this case, we do need to trust that the attorneys that were in the discussions, that have all of the facts, have all of the knowledge, and have evaluated this with the other attorneys in the office. I do put a lot of trust in our law department. I think that they are very good, qualified attorneys. And I had some lengthy discussions with how they came up with recommending this. And so with that, what I would hate to say is, well, it's not my, necessarily my money, so why don't we just go to court and see how it falls and let the court tell us how much to pay? I don't think that that would be very responsible of me to do with taxpayer money, which is why I'm in support of this as well, and concur with everything that Councilman Jerem has said.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo?
And I respect both my colleagues' statements before me, but there's that but. I appreciate that we laid this over, because it gave me a chance to ask some questions maybe we had or we didn't have. And probably the biggest question I have was, and don't get me wrong, I have a heart, so when you hear that the city has torn down a house, you have to, you have to wonder what's behind that. And so my first questions that came about was, once I found out the house wasn't lived in, was, well, how long has the gas and water been off? How long has the electricity been off? Because to me, them are factors in the decision why I'm having trouble with this one, because I understand the legal part of it, and I won't get into too much, because I don't know how the vote's going to go. But if the gas and water's been off since 2013, and the electric's been off long enough that there's an issue in the neighborhood who, I mean, I heard of, and it's not my district. So the questions I asked were given to me here, and one of them was, okay, if the party doesn't live here, and the gas and water's been off that long, what else is here? And I was given this packet, and I'll just, I'll just kind of show you what it was. It's pictures, this place is a hazard, this place nobody can live in. And at the end, there's a whole bunch of figures. Now, possibly other properties, figures that the city may be owed. I true want to be a good steward of the city's money. So for me, just to go ahead and approve this without knowing what we may be owed, is tough for me. And not only that, we sit here on the Board of Eek, which last month, I have to have my, we have to pay attention with the City of Omaha employees who are on the front line, and this is what we get in front of us. This is what we agree with them on for a better quality of life. So I guess it depends on how you want to look at it. I'm going to favor that frontline, the code enforcement people. I do respect the legal part of it, but I have a problem with this one. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I indicated last time, I have relatives who are attorneys, and I still love them. And I do hear that both of these attorneys, and I can't argue that case, but you said our attorneys for the city have said this. Well, I was listening to Public Works, and they said this. They said they could support what they did. See, so I have two departments who basically are at odds with each other. I understand the attorneys, they look in much more detail than perhaps I did, or would, or also the person working in Public Works. I will support what the council wants to do on this, but I did hear the word principle, and, you know, sometimes you do have to pay for having principles. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no more lights? Is there a motion?
There was.
Oh, there was a motion, moving and seconded to approve. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 21 is approved, four to three. Item 22, an ordinance authorizing issuance of a purchase order to DPC Industries, Inc., in the amount of $599,250 for the purchase of sodium hypochlorite to be utilized at the Water Resource Recovery Facilities to be effective for 12 months, and is extendable for two one-year periods with approval of both parties.
Public hearing on agenda item number 22 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 23, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to Farri Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Painting &amp; More, in the amount of $103,635 for maintenance, painting, and coating at two Water Resource Recovery Facilities and lift stations, to be effective for a period of 12 months from the date of award, and is extendable for two one-year periods with approval of both parties.
Public hearing on agenda item number 23 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 24, an ordinance levying a special tax on assessment on lots and pieces of real estate within Street Improvement District 6876 to cover the cost of constructing and improving Pappleton Avenue from 78th Avenue to 80th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 24 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 25, an ordinance levying a special tax on assessment on lots and pieces of real estate within Street Improvement District 6877 to cover the cost of constructing and improving South 78th Avenue from Woolworth Avenue north to Pappleton Avenue.
Public hearing on agenda item number 25 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 26, an ordinance approving a real estate purchase agreement with RLT Premier LLC for the property located at 1706 North 34th Street in the amount of $500.